Yeah, no, the word shuts up, yes. There's only, with this system, there's only three ways that are allowed me on at one time. So when you guys are back and back there and land just saying something is not picking up. So now you actually quite, please, please, yeah, for that worse thing. No, I'm just, just reminder, everything you say, you can't say it to your momma. Keep your mouth shut because everybody's picking up all these conversations. So, do we have quiet?
The track just started and I want not to hear me.
So. That's what I was gonna ask. Sounds like a challenge to me.
All right, uh, have you taken the role? Yes, I, the role has been taken as I stated, as a role pause, being sure calmly. She's also been the indication. So I asked this by the plea for eyes, for you patient, my doing safe for my agents. Director Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if you so choose, please join me in prayer. Our Father in Heaven, Holy is thy name. Thank you for this day and for bringing us here safely to serve you in these positions. Our prayer lists are long, Father, and you know the things in person that are on each of our hearts. Grant the desires of our hearts according to your will. We pray that people will find warmth on this frigid day. We pray for those who must be out for law enforcement, EMS, military personnel, and all who serve in difficult circumstances. Guide us through this day. Thank you that you give us wisdom, strength, grace, and mercy. Help us to be forever grateful. In Jesus's name we pray.
And all the man.
This is my pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Can you give just all, whatever, E and justice for all?
You said that? Thank you, man. Thank all of you for briefing the Australian public this morning. That wasn't easy. And understanding that's why Supervisor Rosa is not here first thing, so encourage if you want. Uh, first order of business, she was taking care of a special recommendation from the previous session, I have motion by Hamilton. I have a second, but Schultz. Any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and then motion carries. Thank you. We have other resignations today, and this is with the Health and Human Services Committee. Uh, Dr. Tristan Ineguez, uh, is moving to a different location. Me and I were there, chain of motion to that act, who they resignation again, the Hamilton, everybody body. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And then in the appointments, again, the Health and Human Services Committee is the physician number, uh, Dr. Tim Golewanski, I think. I can let the app, they're pretty close. They call it Dr. G. Huh? Easy. Okay, so as you said, so I have, I have, I'm, I'm, I'm glad they all stand. And a second by Schultz. Any discussion? Again, all in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and again, that motion carries and that means, so thank you. Do you have any public comment today? A public comment? I don't see it, and we have no acknowledgements or recognitions at this time, although we will welcome few, it's hardly had, uh, as the meeting progresses. So we're gonna move forward into the packet. And this is gonna be a pretty busy month, but I've got a lot of stuff going today. We roll right into the, uh, WCA legislative exchange next week. So there's a lot, it's a lot of directions where we get along with Russia next week or so. So in your packet, getting on page six, is the Operations Committee for January seventh. That's pages six and seven, Operations Committee from January seventh. Supervisor Clendane, can they hear?
I have nothing to, Mr. Chairman. So I want to speak, uh, page eleven, item number. Uh, listen. Page seven, item number eleven, Kim, was, uh, a result of a resolution or motion that we passed. Tonight, I would like to make a motion to come back issue for the telling board. That move that the wage plan for Wood County employees that set forth in the employee's handbook provide that an employee may skip a step only if approved by the employee's department attached. And that the employee may not skip a step once they reach step six. The only exception would be by means of the resolution approved by the Wood County Board. What I'm doing here is trying to get, he has a, my constituents say, why did you raise this person or not? And I said, well, like, it wasn't me, it was the Operations Committee. And I think it should be not just the Operations Committee, I think it should be the entire vote.
I appreciate second to that motion.
Well, Mr. Clendane, if I may interrupt, I'm gonna give you that wording, right? But you must have known about this ahead of time, so I can have that wording now.
And I had some clarification too, as we go forward, they got that. Got. I have to walk over there?
Yes.
He can, he can do that, so.
Get your note to come back, if you may approach the bench. Oh, well, what's beyond that door, right?
Yeah. Hit the fist. That tiny boy was upset with my. So. Does the body mind if I engage in conversation here, so I understand? Do I have a second? Not yet.
Yes.
Second. All right, I have a second, remember. All right, I guess for clarification, somebody asked a question, I guess I should go ahead and your.
So my understanding, the way that he intended it was that it would go through committees, then it would go to the Operations Committee, and then to the County Board. It was just adding an additional step, so it didn't go right from the committee to the County Board. Am I incorrect in this thinking?
No, my understanding is, well, Bill, and that's what you and I kind of said, still goes there. We added that one step in between there, so the committee couldn't directly go that direction.
My, 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 the only way that this got to this County Board is because of this resolution. I mean, this motion that I made today. Otherwise, it would not have been afforded other than at the limits of what she did. But I, I just think it's wrong, you know, I think you should vote it.
I'm gonna ask her, Peter. We have Kim explain. Yes, absolutely. I drafted this, I did, I shared with other folks, and then Kim corrected it, and so. Yeah, I think I know where Supervisor Clendane is going, uh, with this, and Kim.
So.
Can you go on my strong, Kim?
Yeah. Good morning, thank you. Uh, so the policy that the Operations Committee had approved was that anything over step six would go to the Operations Committee. It would be approved there, would not go out of the County Board. So it could be the Oversight Committee included in that decision. Have to be of the Operations Committee approval would be necessary to advance employee over step six for that extra step.
And.
And then Bill's motion, I believe, is to get rid of that advancement over step six, to put the policy back to what it was, which was step six is the mass. Unless the County Board would approve anything over step six by resolution.
Yes. Correct.
Is your.
Alex, Dan. Um, I should imagine Supervisor Clendane's motion that to make it so that you would go to the Operations Committee and then to the County Board for final approval. So adding the Operations Committee in as an intermediate step, but still requiring full board approval, uh, to complete transaction.
I have a second to that, Mattman, for discussion, right, body.
Thank you. So are you, are you saying Operations Committee would have to approve it? And then to the County Board to approve it? If that's, if that's the case, that's where Bill is coming from.
So I don't think that Operations Committee would have to approve it. The Operations Committee could decline it, but that it could go on to the full County Board with just the Oversight Committees.
If I'm just looking at our way in here, maybe we do this, I'm not trying to circumvent stuff, but maybe after discussion, you clarify this, because I don't think anything's gonna happen in the next twenty-five days and then bring back some kind of resolution, Bill, I don't know if that might make. The intent of that meeting that we had where the Human Resources Department at least looked at these was the fact that we have nineteen grades, sixteen steps, seven hundred fifty employees, two hundred fifty job phones, that when a committee decides to just do a raise, that fits somewhere into that box and doesn't change everything. Well, kind of makes sense for an HR department to look at. I think, I want to put words about Supervisor, I just thought, he still wants that to be able to go to the County Board for final approval. Is it, is that a fair statement, Supervisor Clendane?
Yeah.
Should we, based on this discussion, postpone this to a time certain, actually draft this as a policy that would kind of capsule everything you're talking about, because I'm not sure everybody understands exactly where this is going. Bill, if you would please.
Hey, if we're talking about the, uh, members to this, if a member of that committee wanted to do that, why didn't they choose that when they made this motion on it? At the, uh, the executive committee, operations committee, if they wanted to make that, why didn't they make that? Well, I made a motion, we send it to the county board. All I heard was, this is the end of it. You're not gonna be able to. And what did we do when they wanted the Highway Department employee to get this raise that was achieved? They made a resolution and went to the full County Board and it passed. Only two people voted against it. So what I'm saying is, whatever happened with that, that's what I want to happen with any place that is not up to the Operations Committee.
So, Tim. It seems to me that it's a bureaucratic twist to put a hook in it, to pull it back around the committee. Why? Then the people that make these decisions know these people, or they're deserving. They're big.
I have a few comments. So first of all, I was gonna say, my intention was that I did go to County Board when I presented it. I apologize, I didn't make that clear when we drafted the policy change. That might have been my misunderstanding. The second was that the intention of working at Operations Committee is as the layer of HR oversight and ensures that HR is involved at the process, being that Operations Committee oversees HR. And that way we understand where the pay grades are falling and making sure that we don't get into a wage compression or potentially a whipsaw situation where people just keep giving raises to try to match other raises.
So that's the, the issue. It isn't probably going back to the org. I, I think Supervisor Ballestein just said that way, had this conversation briefly with Supervisor Clendane yesterday. Obviously, I didn't clarify either, um, and nobody else. Some of the concern comes from, for instance, if you have a five-person committee, even in Seattle, that could happen, that's it would. And you have three people present, you have a forum, and two people on that committee decide that they want to give somebody a raise to whatever number they kind of want. There's not a lot of oversight, especially when they haven't talked to even the HR department at any point in time. And that was the reason that it was gonna come back to the Operations Committee. Now, if you have the committee and the Operations Committee, you generally have a consensus for a majority of the board, all 10 in mind, based on the size of the committees of the board. I don't have any problem with it coming back to a full board as that extra step either. And I think that's what Supervisor Clendane wants as a final step. But I don't know that we, no, Peter? That wasn't what, that I couldn't. Yeah, I agree. So. No, this. Yeah, that, please. Easy work, once you have a money out of top here, that's just, you just, uh, probably. Uh, so my understanding of what Supervisor Clendane, um, was looking for was to give more authority to the Oversight Committees, where the Oversight Committee would make a final decision. Hopefully, they would involve the HR department, but it wasn't part of the motion. And that the Oversight Committee would control things, but it would be back to where things were in the past, that an Oversight Committee could only, in fact, it isn't, it's a department head. Sorry, it's a department head who can then decide whether or not they want to give their employee an increase, uh, a jump, this dump a step or skip a step. So that's the way things, um, happen. And if there were a department head, then it would be the Oversight Committee, but otherwise, it would leave it to the department head. You'd run the issues regards to the whipsawing, and even though they get advice from HR, doesn't mean that it's going to be followed by a department head. And so there lies the concern for the folks in the Operations Committee and the, uh, Human Resources Department. But I think Bill wanted to keep things pretty much the way they were, and he did not, specifically did not want to be able to get past step six by skipping. Right now, with the, um, proposal, I think by the Operations Committee, it's not really a proposal, you may change. You can skip past step six. So in other words, you could be at step eight and then go to step ten, um, give them back the, um, Operations Committee and the Oversight Committee approve it. I don't think you can, in the air, that the County Board had to approve it, but you want that, and you don't. Uh, that's what gets around. Have I stated things correctly, as far as your understanding, Supervisor?
Can I ask a lawyer or a lawyer?
Yes. I'm, yeah, and I'm trying to be less confusing, so. And since none of us have this written in front of us, and this is likely to come, not come before us, before the DAX meeting. If as a court, you think it would make more sense to put this down in writing specifically inclusive of all privacy and everything else, and then bring it before this body for approval? It makes sense, then they have even options in there, um, that HR is comfortable with, because then, can't you have to be the line minister this long term? And so I think it makes sense to hurry that the outlook, attitude, information, and so on, so that everybody's on the same page. And so to not, in effect, sweep this under the rug, what might be most appropriate, uh, and I'll go back to you, Bill, too, for counting that, Tim. Is to postpone it tight down, you know, which would be the next County Board meeting, to take this up with the actual verbiage in front of us, the writing, and compatible with some actions.
Supervisor Brad? Yes, yeah, I would be favored of, uh, postponement for once. Certified, I can get again, ready, and so we don't worry.
So that's a, that would be a residential motion, so your motion is supposed to go on to a time death, and that's kind of what we need to do. Second to that. Supervisor Schultz, okay, now we go into discussion, we go, Supervisor Clendane?
I, I totally disagree with that. The Operations Committee just look when, when somebody, uh, said, oh, I, I want to get out of my job here. I got a better offer someplace else. And I, all of a sudden, the executive committee or the Operations Committee says, we used to do it under the executive committee. Oh, let's call that person in and see if we can raise. I, as a supervisor, don't have no say in that at all, because somebody sat down with this individual and said, if you stay here, we'll give you this much more money. I think that's wrong. I think it should be the whole County Board, and that's what this could lead to. And also, um, just look when it comes to, what are we gonna pay our elected official? The elected official that, uh, that were just elected went eight years without a, without a raise. And they're gonna say, well, look, this, uh, they, they gotta, no, they didn't, take it times eight, divide it by eight, and see how much they got. It was the Operations Committee or somebody in that Operations Committee decided not to pay up. In a company for me, before the County Board, no, it didn't. I don't think we should put this off one bit, because they had their chance at the last meeting, and they made this motion. And I disagree with it, because exactly what happened was the committee made a resolution, put it before the County Board, and it passed. It passed, only two people voted against it. But I, I think that's just delaying.
We'll catch your leg. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, something we're overlooking here, and maybe some of us are overlooking, uh, Bill referenced page seven and number eleven there. Um, there was one no vote on that motion, and that was Supervisor Anna. And his statement is that we're providing extra layers of approval. And I think that goes to the heart of Supervisor Clendane's motion. If we don't want that, we're not coming before the County Board. I see no point in delaying this to, like, for months. And I don't think Supervisor Clendane is gonna withdraw his motion.
Doesn't have to, there's a, there's a motion on the floor. However, um, I, in agreement with, trying to clarify, live the cure, Supervisor Clendane, I don't think, according to Supervisor Ballestine or us, that it was a preclude County, the County Board. I think it was a intermediate step, where at least the HR department was involved in the conversation. I, I think that's in character. Supervisor Anna?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a four no on this committee, double, I believe, there needed to be an extra step with the Operations Committee, uh, see of them. And the reason was, because I don't think the way it's done now was really a problem. It's only been brought forward twice in the last ten years, where someone jumped that extra, extra step after step six. And I, uh, I like the way it's done out, where the Oversight Committee, if they want to jump somebody that extra step for extraordinary pay, your, uh, to ordinance, that they draft a resolution that they send on to County Board, and then all of us get to decide on it, which, you know, I think is a fair way to do it, instead of adding that operations step. You know, operations to bring out, you know, whatever they want, I, I think HR should be a mold in discussion. But I think the procedure should be, the Oversight Committee drafts a resolution, if they have an employee staying in play, you see, jump that step, and then they bring it to the full County Boards, we all get to decide on it. I, I don't think this needs to be delayed. I think it's pretty clear, it's a pretty simple motion in my mind, whether we want that extra step, but the Operations Committee looking at it, or if we want each Oversight Committee to have the authority to send that on to the full County Board. So I would, uh, I would vote no on, on the motion to postpone this, and I would agree with Supervisor Clendane that we don't need that, um, additional layer of oversight. Thank you.
Supervisor Brad. I'm trying to know in similar.
In Wood County, our committees play crucial role in overseeing various departments. We work closely with individuals in those roles and understand their contributions firsthand. Adding an extra step to the process and reaching the full Wood County Board is unnecessary and only creates delays. When it comes to approving raises for the employees we oversee, our committees are in the best position to make informed decisions. We know their work, their dedication, and their value to the county. Trusting the committees ensures a fair, efficient process without unnecessary bureaucracy. Let's keep the process straightforward and effective. Decisions about raises should remain with those who know these individuals best, then it can be moved to the full County Board.
Supervisor Ballestine.
So my question is going to be, at what point are you ensuring that HR is involved and making sure that the wage plan is being followed appropriately?
Give me a, if you don't, Supervisor, I'll just say, you know, like I said, I have no problem with this going to the Board. Where I do have a problem is if a committee did this and an Operations Committee never did talk about it, if there's nobody else, they say it comes to the full Board. How many of you sitting here today, there were nineteen grades and you played pay plan? Probably not a lot of people, unless you possibly sit on that, or two hundred fifty different classifications, and that doesn't include our health charters. Uh, or sixteen steps, or where that falls, or how that creates, you know, either a oppression issue or just an issue where it's unfair. Uh, and that's why I think HR needs to be involved now. I'm still, so my bigger problem with this is, uh, not the fact that we're looking to change this. Because I have zero problem with that, but that none of us have this clarity or this in front of us, where we can look at this or the options. And I, and so my point, and, and I think Supervisor Brad's kind, in the postponement for months, is nothing's gonna happen in the next month. We can look at this in front of you in writing, where you can see it, have a chance to look at it. You as a board member have the, because this didn't come as a resolution, where you have a chance to look at this for the last four days, where you have a chance to talk to the HR department and those other people who might be involved, see how this, how this works. Supervisor, but.
Thank you. I agree that HR can guide, they can guide us on this. But the big thing to me is that, can Mr. Brink said it well, um, the Oversight Committee knows the most about what's going on in the department. We meet with them months and months. So, you know, so it should, people on the Operations Committee that really don't deal with all these employees, I don't, I don't agree with that, we gotta get the blessing from them. I think Mr. Brink said, well, I don't meant to reiterate it.
If I can clarify, it doesn't have to do with the employees, then the department has to do with the department head. Generally speaking, when it comes directly to the committee to make that decision. Correct? An department head to make that recommendation, we're talking specifically here, though, in regard to a department head's request going to the committee. They stick. Directly. And we, we know where we're getting, we'll go down this, and we'll, well, all of this, Supervisor Clendane, I don't know about as much discussion as we can, I just.
So, I just say that two people on the Operations Committee is doing the most, are doing the easiest of all of this. And I, I just say, the other two, and if not spoken out, I just, I just, I see it so simple, putting this off. I, I never, you know, not that I'm objecting to it, but I never heard the Alphandgast, the chair and the vice chair, arguing so much about a motion that was made, and how many of them, I, I'm just amazed about that. Where, where's the question of people, be having a chance to talk? I'd like to know what the other two supervisors on the Board think, or the Operations Committee.
He can, and Supervisor, they want to certainly allow that, um, the reason, and I would typically defer, because there'd be a resolution in front of me, and I could handle the gamble with somebody. But there wasn't a resolution, this came off the floor, uh, where nobody has this verbiage or this wording in front of us. So, um, it was a surprise to me, I was not informed that this could occur, or we might have made a proper, right, deal. Uh, preparations, yeah, people speak on both sides of this issue. Supervisor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My feelings were neutral when this all started, but when the Vice Chair made the statement in committee about this being a assurance that the Human Resources Department will have their say in the matter, this is what have people in favor of rest, will for, uh, to be, thinking.
Supervisor Schultz. Okay, I'm looking for Supervisor Rosa, too.
Thank you. Um, well, I made the second, uh, Supervisor Clendane, I'm not against what you brought to the Board here. I don't like voting on something this important if I don't have the verbiage in front of me that I can actually sit down and look, look it over, look at what would correctly go in, and what changes are being made based on my votes. So that, that was why I seconded Supervisor Brad's motion. I'm not saying I'm gonna vote for or against the motion. I, I just am wanting to clarify that that is why I gained second, is because I don't like voting on stuff that's important right here, so don't it being great.
Thank you. Oh, yes, look, absolutely. Don't vote, Mr. Chairman. She lost. Rat house. Can I, I love that, first, Bill said you asked where you want us to be first. Supervisor Clendane, go ahead, if you're up, go ahead. Supervisor Rosa, she has spoken, and I can wait for her.
Well, the only reason I didn't speak is my chime clock was chiming the hour, and so I wanted to make sure it was finished chiming before I chime in. Um, I, I'd like to just speak to the fact that I think that as, um, bringing the Operations Committee, number one, assures that the Human Resources is looking at the big picture. Sometimes we as individual committees, uh, just are kind of tunnel visions, and we just look at what the, what the benefit or the, um, what the benefit is for that individual or that, um, department. And so by bringing the Operations Committee in, it just broadens that perspective. And, you know, it, what is wrong with having a broader perspective? If the justification for that is brought to the Operations Committee, and the Operations Committee looks at the justification, that's five more votes on the County Board that are gonna support that recommendation from the committee. So I don't see why that is a negative, I see that as a positive. But by bringing the Operations Committee in, it assures that there's a look at the bigger picture other than just the perhaps tunnel vision that is brought forth by the individual committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Yeah, I was to react to, Ms. Rosa, when she made comment about television, I think there's television. Because, uh, Ms. Ballestine, I have asked about it. No one must have been said about HR. Well, there's no problem with Mr. Clendane's, um, motion is to add, I mean, I, I know where this came, this came all the way back from the Highway Commissioner when we discussed this thing. That there could be something added to that policy or resolution that it. That there could be something added to that policy or resolution that includes HR involved in just those squad meetings.
And that's where I see it. The wait till month to put it in front of you, I'm guessing that when this came in Florida, I was unaware that it's gonna come forward. I'm guessing that HR wasn't aware this was gonna come forward nor had any input on how this might be crafted to meet the needs of everybody. Superintendent Clendetti.
I was, did this not just might worthy and Sam. I, I went to corporation council, corporation council went to HR. So I got an email, put that conversation bullet, and I come up with this, with this with this motion. And I think it's been family and I'm glad to call for a motion on it.
Well, you don't, yeah, because I have the, the question on the floor and the ranking motion is postponed definitely to the next month. Supervisor Butky, that's what we're debating right now.
Thank you. Did anybody say could not be in there?
Why do we have to have an operation committee even do that? When, when this is coming up with raises, why can't somebody from HR be in the room? I don't think we have to have the whole operation committee for this. I, I'm starting to think, uh, somebody wants control over stuff that they don't need to.
The fact that they, they haven't been involved and that's part of the problem, that's part of why they wanted to have this as an agenda and I just keep looking at it. This is a, the HR department, this was right. So anyway, on the, but it's Supervisor Ballistine, if we're still on the motion to postpone definitely until the next meeting.
Yeah, so I, I have no problem with HR being involved at the committee level, but then I would like to see that in the policy to make sure that that happens. In which case I would again choose to postpone so that we can get that in right accordingly.
But it doesn't have to go to operation to.
At all. I would be satisfied if one of HR was all the C lines.
And that's, I think, what, like, the suggestion was made to have choice A, B, and C. Um, then you have in front of you for a few days to look at it and see what means. Is there further discussion on the motion to postpone definitely until the March meeting? Right, all in favor? Vote the board.
Yeah, let's worry about the board. Realize polls, polls, I mean, you know, just keep that in mind.
All right, the motion on the table, postpone definitely until the next meeting where we can, so, so, uh, please vote.
Supervisor Rosar.
Yes.
I can be. They fixed it, so my, all I can. Okay, that failed.
Supervisor, Mr. Chairman.
I pushed yes and it came out negative. So you did push no by mistake is what you're saying. Yes, we prepared, that's what I'm for. We can change that, you wish. That's it, listen on board.
If the motion passes ten to nine, postpone definitely. Until the March meeting. And then I would ask that Supervisor Clendetti meet with HR, um, and maybe Supervisor Ballistine or put together exactly what you want in writing so everybody can look at it prior to the meeting and maybe they're just, I think, faulty is for this bad debt, you don't buy. If it goes directly to the board with at least HR, that you step into twenty. That sounds like a reasonable combination in this next month. And anybody else wants to try it in, we set it for Friday. All right, Supervisor Butt, I think we're going where you want to go. Um, just not in the timeframe you want to go there. Last piece is gone. It, these issues become difficult when nobody has in front of them to look at, uh, prior to nor look at what the advantages and or disadvantages may be. And I'm guessing that mostly in that pervade of cannot state, including myself, what the current policy, the personnel policy outlook is, um, 'cause you didn't know you had to. So anyway, uh, this will be taken up at the March meeting. Um, hopefully Supervisor Clendetti, uh, what the HR department can put this in writing. Uh, Supervisor Ballistine, I think that he maybe can be involved in that conversation to craft that language. Can I ask if the vote was? Ten to nine, ten to nine. Ten to nine. Ten four, nine against. All right, moving after. Anything else after that, um, minutes from the January seventh meeting, from the January seventh meeting, that was pages six and seven, and the attempted page on eight. All right, moving forward, the monthly letter amendments from the county clerk on nine, ten, and eleven. From the human resources department, beginning is at twelve and runs through seventeen, twelve through seventeen. And then, is there any objection? It's taking eleven budget amendment resolutions. Uh, together they run pages twenty to thirty, they're all amendments to the budget. Any objection? Vote. Seeing nothing.
This is like Resolution twenty-five dash two dash one to amend the twenty twenty-four arbitrage rebate payment budget for paying arbitrage costs associated with debt borrowing that was not anticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from the general investment and forst account, the adjustment to the budget totals ninety-two thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. Resolution twenty-five dash two dash two to amend the twenty twenty-four debt service paid agent budget for debt issuance costs not anticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The sources of funding are transfers available and not anticipated to be spent in the debt service principal budget. The adjustment to the budget totals twenty-eight hundred dollars. Resolution twenty-five dash two dash three to amend the twenty twenty-five dispatch capital projects budget to include expenditures for projects that was started in the twenty twenty-four budget year. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unspent funds from previous approved CIP debt funding. The adjustment to the budget totals one hundred and five thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars. Resolution twenty-five dash two dash four to amend the twenty twenty-four budget for emergency management building number identification function for additional expenditures that were not anticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from local government charges. The adjustment to the budget totals eighteen hundred dollars. Resolution twenty-five dash two dash five to amend the twenty twenty-four budget for UW extension projects for a purpose of funding higher than anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from UW extensions, four H community youth account. The address to the budget totals forty-five thousand dollars. Resolution twenty-five dash two dash six to amend the land conservation's MDB budget for additional expenditures that were not anticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unspent funds from the twenty twenty-three MDB budget. The adjustment to the budget totals six thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Resolution twenty-five dash two dash seven to amend the twenty twenty-four budget for transportation and economic development for a purpose of funding higher than anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from the transportation and economic development, WIDEC and Thrive Rural Grant Program account. The adjustment to the budget totals two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Resolution twenty-five dash two dash eight to amend the twenty twenty-four budget for corporate courts, family court commissioner budget for a purpose of funding higher than anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, the source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from the corporate courts, family court commissioners, local charges and transfers available and not anticipated to be spent in the corporate courts budget. The adjustment to the budget totals four thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars. Resolution twenty-five dash two dash nine to amend the twenty twenty-four budget for corporation council function for a purpose of funding higher than anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, the source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from the corporation council court fees. The adjustment to the budget totals twenty-two hundred dollars. Resolution twenty-five dash two dash ten to amend the twenty twenty-four budget for the victim witness judgment for a purpose of funding higher than anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from victim witness fines and forfeitures. The adjustment to the budget totals one thousand two hundred fifteen dollars. Resolution twenty-five dash two dash eleven to amend the twenty twenty-five information technologies capital projects budget to include expenditures for projects that were in process but not completed at December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The source of funding is unspent funds from previously approved capital project debt funds. The adjustment to the budget totals fifty-six thousand thirty-seven dollars.
You've heard the reading in those eleven resolutions. I need you, if you repeat those. I have a special microphone. All right, do we have a motion to adopt by brass second by, uh, what? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please go to the board and vote. Supervisor Rosar.
Yes.
And that resolution passed nineteen zero. If the court please read the next.
This will be resolution twenty-five dash two dash twelve to show additional elements of committed and assigned governmental fund balance projected as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Fiscal note, total committed assigned governmental fund balance as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four is projected to be six million six hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred twenty dollars.
Most like Clendetti, second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Any discussion? Yes, please vote. Supervisor Rosar.
Yes.
Supervisor. And that resolution passing is nineteen zero. Do we have one more resolution coming forward from operations?
And then this will be resolution twenty-five dash two dash thirteen to accept the offer of sale of tax-dead property. Fiscal note, the offer amounted to thirty-two hundred dollars minus real estate taxes, tax interest, publication fees, and tax deed expense, net a gain of twenty-seven hundred and thirteen dollars sixty cents.
Motion by Ballistine, second by Brad. Any discussion? There. Please vote. Supervisor Rosar.
Yes.
And that resolution passed nineteen zero as well. Yes. Um, I have a, well, let me do one other thing here. I had a couple of pages I stuck together and we had those eleven resolutions and that was page eighteen, which was the, uh, monthly update from the treasurer's office. Anybody have any questions there? Or page nineteen, which was employee wellness. The best. And that, Supervisor Ballistine.
Yeah, I would like to take this opportunity for something more exciting to introduce our new finance director, Mia Yang. We're happy to have you on board, know that, uh, Mia has officially retired. So everyone welcome Mia. She is one of.
Sure enough, yes, uh, my new deputy is, uh, Darren Steinbach. Um, he came from human services, uh, still with the county for.
Uh, six years.
Six years. Um, when he started with the county, he started as the accounting clerk and that was previous to fishing the idols and other people services. And so then he worked his way up and, um, he was the assistant fiscal, that name changed a couple of times, I think, so what is the phone name now?
The magistrate services.
Just a man. Just a girl. And so he was in that position for a couple of years, three years, three episodes. And so, um, we were able to, I was able to snatch him and, um, I'm very happy Darren's done a fantastic job so far. Uh, and he's catching on really quick, like how you maybe would and you from, um, and I hope that all the corporate heads, uh, will enjoy working with him as much as I do. I know they will and so we're, and that's really happy to have him.
Operations committee said you had a scan. Fight at the desk.
Thank you, human service, for being intimated for our finance department.
That, and see, random back there, we took two of his, my best employees of last month and we have to do dishes with physicality, uh, as they moved up and out, so, you know, thanks. All right, moving forward in the pack at page thirty-four, uh, five and six, our month for the health and human service committee of January twenty-third. That's thirty-four through thirty-six. And we got North Central Community Action on thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Mr. Chairman.
I forgot about any doubt. Supervisor Rosar.
Thank you. So if I could make a comment to the board, Mr. Chairman, about the Health and Human Services Committee meeting, please.
Yes.
If you will look at, uh, agenda item number four, you, uh, will see that we had a presentation from Whitley on a possible reuse of someone's order footage at, uh, Edgewater Haven. Justin, the, uh, Edgewater, any of the illustrators, put a document on each one of your decks that, um, is a, a financial document about how, uh, this project would go forth and some of the information about it. I wanted to bring attention to that document so that you have a chance to review that over the next month. We're going to do an informational presentation to the county board next month on this project to answer any questions that you have and present, um, present the project to the county board because obviously this will need full county board approval. So if you would please, uh, peruse this document over the next month, um, formulate your questions that you like one asked. And then when we do the informational, um, presentation next month, and we will have somebody from Whitley at that presentation. So you'll have a chance to ask specific question about this financial modeling that they presented to the committee. So I just wanted to bring attention, um, your attention to that document and please bring that back with you next month when we have the presentation so that, uh, you can have any questions that you might have answered at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Rosar. Supervisor Butky.
Thank you. I just want to commend justice, um, he along with Whitney, uh, came up with ideas on better use and more use for Edgewater Haven. I just wanna say a good job.
Thank you. We, yeah, we have fairly in-depth presentation and discussion on that class, we, uh, you're gonna see more of that in the floor. Any other response to what Supervisor Rosar just stated? All right, and we'll move forward, page thirty-nine, UPA, uh, Minnesota Veteran Service Commission, December thirteenth. And then we have the monthly updates from the human services department, begins with Director Brulick's at forty, runs through forty-five. And we have the veteran service officer's report at forty-six. And we have the veteran service officer's report from January twenty-third and forty-seven and forty-eight. Of the safety committee for January third, first on page nine. The regularly monthly, or the regularly scheduled monthly meeting from February tenth on fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two. And then you have the annual monthly report, looks like an annual report, because it starts on fifty-three, the rest is seventy-three from the sheriff's department, fifty-three through seventy-three. And we'll get an update right at the end of this, where we are at the end of the pack, end of the entire pack on the jail, I will always stand on that. Uh, moving forward in the packet, conservation, education, economic development, seventy-four, seventy-five, and seventy-six, they're beginning from February fifth. Getting on seventy-seven and going through seventy-eight is the North Central Wisconsin Tourism Partnership Board of Directors. And I kindly mentioned before, I'm interested, um, generally that now is, uh, Carl Grant Hamilton. So if you have any questions there on what we're doing in that respect, Supervisor Hamilton. Our monthly update from UW extension, seventy-nine through eighty-four is December's monthly update, eighty-five through eighty-eight, and it handles January's. And then we have the activities report from Lake Water Department, begins at eighty-nine, everybody see ninety-four, hit that in ninety-four. Update from Director Grunberg and planning zoning, ninety-five, six, seven, and eight, get ninety-five, ninety-eight. And then the monthly meeting, committee meeting of the judicial and legislative committee, parallel six, Supervisor Clendetti.
Uh, Chairman, now the committee, I pay the youth, um, employee, uh, we stick or corporation council. As they were snake or standing in, it's them. Uh, he joined us probably many of the towns and, and Wood County and us, um, she might be.
Nice to meet everybody, nice to see those faces that I've already met, uh, and nice to see everybody here. Uh, so as, uh, Bill had mentioned, I do, uh, you know, I, I come from a number of different counties that I do represent, uh, in Wood, Amish, Portage, Juneau, uh, counties and so did. Uh, certainly, uh, uh, and looking forward to the opportunity here. I'm looking forward to working with everybody, uh, here and, uh, and formally starting on March there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we've had several conversations on how big a shoes those are. Two, three. And I don't, Peter keeps talking that down, stating that's not that much, but it is a lot. We do appreciate, um, you coming on board, accepting that position and that working on Peter over the last month or so. And get a feel for what is gonna be expected and just it appears, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Uh, moving forward, like I said, the judicial legislative committee minutes, uh, February sixth are ninety-nine through one oh three, basically one oh two and then one oh two and one oh three, uh, with some. Uh, moving forward, like I said, the judicial legislative committee minutes, uh, February sixth are ninety nine through one oh three, basically one oh two and then one oh two and one oh three, uh, with some veterinary service. Provided, Bill, that's enough. The child support agency update on one oh four, corporate courts on one oh five, the court councils update on one oh six. And then the Wood County Criminal Justice Department's update at one oh seven, one oh eight, have archived. Uh, register probate, monthly update, I want ten, and the registered these outfits on one. Victim witness, they are at one twelve. And then we have the highway infrastructure regulation committee, monthly meds, uh, from February sixth begins at one thirteen and runs through one sixteen. One thirteen to one sixteen. The Wood County Wildlife Area Citizens Advisory Board, one seventeen through one twenty, one seventeen to one twenty. And then the monthly update from the highway commissioner's office, who are hawks, begins at one twenty one and runs through one twenty eight. One twenty one, one twenty eight. Monthly report for the project, Fourth Street Park, one twenty nine and one thirty. As Supervisor Hutton wanted to touch base with, but God, always gloves that you're up there this week.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everything's looking actually a lot of this color is well public or sad and they get some family, but the young kids really enjoyed it. Chats, uh, chats proves them an excellent job. Everything looks so like she.
And I know it's on the website and the information is available there, but I touched base with, uh, Jay yesterday. He said it was great and I thought if one more mention, somebody's watching this or paying attention or listening, uh, they will have our participation under this weekend. Uh, the weather sounds pretty good, so hopefully we'll have another current turnout. So that was their update, gap one twenty nine, about thirty. We move forward to the North Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Um, this is a large packet of runs from page one thirty one to one seventy, one thirty one to one seventy. And this is a Wood County Highway Infrastructure Rigoration Committees, uh, Wood County Parks Open Space and Plan. I've been through a few times. I'm sure everyone of you read every page here. Uh, if you haven't yet, take the time to look at it. Uh, we solicit input from the public. I'm allowed to listen. We get some interesting suggestions over the years. I remember one was a giant fountain in the river here downtown has gratins. So, uh, it doesn't necessarily fucking the park's plan, but the public's invited to chime in. Yes, I'm going to go on this. All right, as we move forward, uh, there's an ovation agreement, contract one seventy one and one seventy two. We have no innovation contracts as we will it. I had to, we go forward, we have, uh, the timber harvest, uh, from the forest administrator, one seventy three, uh, to one seventy six. Look at that. We have pretty good gear. And then as we go forward in the packet, we have minutes of the property and information technology committee. Begins on one seventy seven, runs through one seventy eight, one seventy seven, and one seventy eight. And they have been exceptionally busy, as you can see from their monthly letter comments, as we get this jail ramped up and and raised a double time. Those of you who are betting the, I don't know what you call it, that there are the utility room, the control room, the div miles and miles cable in there. And I'm not exaggerating. I want to take a look at that at some point. Can one seventy nine to one eighty four, their monthly update? And then we have our monthly update from our facilities manager, William Chassel. Uh, I'm not calling you guys right now and I'll ask the board if they have any questions. Maybe we get turfing and get you guys to come up to microphone quickly. And we can give an update on where we have some of the actions we planned that have been ran, but we're still working on some. You know, what are they called? Promotion certifications, we stay for accuracy.
Sure. Morning, everyone. Good to see you. Uh, jail staff training is underway. And again, reiterating what I talked you over, uh, last couple of months that we met is that that's an extensive portion of here's the building that they're going to occupy and the jail staff need to be comfortable with the function and the operation of the jail. Our systems integrator finished up their testing of the system last Friday. Uh, the jail staff training started this week and it's going to continue this week and into further training. Uh, ultimately what that boils down to is there's some policies that are written for your building and there's obviously these systems that everybody needs to be comfortable with and to make sure that there are no bugs before we move inmates into that space. So the occupancy data moving, the inmates in there is going to be a fluid element with the sheriff and their jail staff being comfortable that their staff are fully trained. Uh, but I mean, you're sure you'll see that those things will be, will be moving in that direction. Questions on that?
Yes, anybody have any questions, thoughts? Mostly probably toured the facility at least once, if not several times. Scott, it's right.
Front entrance, we'll take it. For entrance, there is a new equipment that has been placed on order that we don't have. It's final delivery data yet, so the consideration is of possibly moving some of the existing equipment over there. So we have, we have, we don't have a firm date on that. We prefer to wait for the doings or everyone twice. So we're waiting to see what we get. I expect that. As soon as possible, we'll be the answer.
And let me know. Any other questions? Robert, can I say anything? You're good? All right, page of the room. It's been extraordinary, kind of, in order, you know, the very final stretch of this, and hopefully get this done in the next month or so. Again, thank you, gentlemen. So that was the update from our service manager and Turk. Uh, moving forward, we have Central Wisconsin State Sheriff's Corps of Directors beginning, uh, December sixteenth, and that's one eighty six, eighty seven, and eighty one. We have the myself memorial black record trustees, one eighty nine, the ninety and ninety one. Here will be a law at half committee meeting, uh, December twenty third on the page one ninety two. And then the same way they're reading agenda second, a bunch of three. And then that brings us to the final thing, the packet, as the South Central Highway System Board of Trustees, that's from twelve twenty, and that's one ninety four, ending one ninety five. Um, so that's the packet. Couple of things I wanted to mention, Supervisor Penceover, uh, what, you know, one thing is that we do at our county that's provided basically on a volunteer basis is a rescue squad. And Supervisor Penceover has raffle tickets. Anybody that's interested knows, uh, that up for that collaboration, I don't know if you're saying the calm death.
Uh, it's a good deal, twenty five dollars to take and they start crying the day of the first of May. I've got plenty of tickets here if anybody wants to get a hold of me later or. Well, I should know, we'll be around that committee.
Thank you. Um, the last thing I'll mention, like I said, anyone number who are signed up for the legislative exchange next week in Madison, I can tell you, I was on the phone yesterday with our staff down there. There's going to be record attendance. Um, yeah, it's going to be a huge event. Um, they've got the ad seen him. Uh, so I know I'm going to see a number you down there. If you haven't signed up, it might still be an opportunity, but, uh, that opportunity may exist. Mr. Clark, would you have anything?
Yes, I mean, Mr. Chairman, thank you. It'll be great. Um, today's election day, you guys all looked at me like I'm doing the math probably. Today's election day is the spring ragging. So if you haven't voted, please go out and do so. It'll be a little turnout, but we'll still be here. Um, I want to get Mr. Schultz back to Marshville just as soon as he moved the fossils so he can work the polls as well. Um, also, um, my chief deputy has put in her retirement. Um, her last day will be March fifth and she has a pre-planned vacation next week. So on your way out the door, you'll say goodbye to Sherry. Um, and we're in the process of.
Hiring.
We're in the process of hiring a new chief deputy as a P H R director.
Anybody else have anything of importance on that? This is not, all right. Right before I adjourn, if I could get, um, Supervisor Clendetti, Supervisor Ballistana, and Kimma Grant, just to quickly be up here, see if what we can set up. I appreciate that. And then without objection, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.